Greetings. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Before we start our meeting, we have a new board member, James Sirowick, and he is going to take his oath of office.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
Of Richmond Community Schools, McComb and St. Clair Counties, Michigan.
Of Richmond Community Schools, McComb and St. Clair Counties, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
I'd just like to point out that officially you were sworn in yesterday, as we know, in front of a notary. So this is more of a ceremony for the audience. So it has been sent to the county clerk's office.
Thank you. Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could please do the mission statement. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a global quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. Thank you. Roll call, please. Jim?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
James?
Here.
And Sherry is absent with notice. And Danielle is absent with notice. You have a form. And I am present, you have a form. Thank you. Um, before we approve our agenda, we need to make two changes. We are removing items B and C from the presentation section. Uh, the students that were being honored tonight wish to go to the boys' basketball game um, as they play in the first round of the regionals.
I lost my 35.
Uh, yeah, thank you. We will honor those students at our next board meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the changed agenda. So any support? Support? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So any support? Or any discussion? Mr. Wong's line?
We have a, uh, on the personnel report, we have a couple retirements or a retirement. Mr. Finley, our elementary middle school K-5 music teacher, who's retiring again this school year. Uh, Mrs. McIntyre, she's currently purchasing an accounts payable coordinator. She is resigning. She's took, taken another position in a district down river. Uh, we have a new hire, Jill Gaybridge, of our special ed curriculum. Previously Jill was part of our district. Uh, she had left our district and went to another district and has decided to come back. Um, and Amanda Walden, who the board previously approved as a lunch supervisor, will now also, previously approved as a child care, will also be now a lunch supervisor at one of our schools. Uh, there was one correction I sent the board in the minutes from the February 28th. Um, so the revised one is in the board packet. There was a statement in there that was from my notes to ask, and I didn't ask it at the board meeting. So it's been removed from the minutes. Uh, there's been no corrections pointed out for the special meeting on March 1st or March 9th. And there were no questions regarding claims and accounts.
Any questions for Mr. Wong's line? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, we will start with our presentations. Um, we will be having Richmond Lodge Grant Award.
Is it?
Good evening. I should tell you, first of all, I spent 10 years on a public school board. It can be a very thankless job and a very rewarding job. So congratulations to all of you. And also it can be different all times, but what you're doing for children, can't stress that. So good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, just to explain, people say Richmond Masonic Lodge Masons. A lot of people start scratching their head saying, who are they? What do they do? And I think the easiest way to identify what masonry is, besides being a fraternal organization for men, and there is a woman's organization too. Uh, but if everybody's heard of Shrine, at the Shrine Circus, Shriner's Hospital, well, you have to be a Mason to belong to the Shrine. So if that kind of establishes who we are, that kind of makes the identity. It all starts with the Blue Lodge of what here in Richmond Lodge 187 has been in existence for over 160 years. And we are the lodge that also, over the years, are made up and Memphis Lodge is merged into Richmond Lodge. We're down on Main Street, we meet the first Thursday of every month. So just to give you a little bit of history. Through the state of Michigan, our grand organization, we have Initiative Charitable Foundation, and they have made available to their lodges certain monies to go out and give within the community. We at Richmond Lodge decided that we wanted to create some educational grants, which we did for this, uh, started this year. And I worked with Superintendent Wong's lead on getting this kicked off. Renee followed up very well. And we had four applicants that came from teachers, from Richmond schools. And we had to sit down and make a decision of who we were going to award it to. And we did decide that we were going to award this $500 educational grant to Christopher Falk and Rebecca Perkula, the special ed teachers. How do I get it here?
This there.
Always hard, you know, because when you include, you have to exclude people. But what you do, especially special ed, very difficult thing to do. I know you have a program that's not going to see it all completely, but I hope it's a good start for you. And um, thank you very much for applying. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you mind giving the board just an update on the grant and what the money will be used for?
Yep. For sure.
Then we'll do a picture afterwards.
Yeah, okay. We have a whole thing. We have a whole thing.
He's secure. It's always fine.
It's all about you. Okay. So first of all, let's say thank you to the Richmond Lodge for reaching out to the district and offering a great opportunity to teachers to help enrich the education within the community. Um, with your generous gift, our special education students at Richmond High School will not only have access to a learning platform that caters to their individual learning gaps and needs, but a learning platform that they love and they want to work on.
Our grant proposal was written to help supplement the purchase of the IXL learning platforms for our special education student population at the high school. While the platform offers many subjects, we were primarily focused on reading and math as those two subjects are what our students seem to struggle with the most. Within the program, each student has an individual list of skills to work on based on their NWA scores and allows us to see their learning in action.
So for F my students in my classroom, I teach the positively impaired students. Um, my students can earn virtual prizes with every success that they see with every single lesson that they do. Um, and they are so excited when they earn each individual prize. Um, they asked to see, um, they asked me to come over and see every single thing that they earned, even if it's five minutes in between lessons. Um, and they strive to master every single skill on their skill set. Um, just with the trial from September to December, my students mastered a total of 221 different skills. They are proficient in 227 other skills and have answered 9,822 questions. So our winter NWA testing window fell right after our trial had ended with IXL. So after reviewing the scores, all three of the students showed significant growth in both reading and math in many different subcategories. So for two highlights, thanks to IXL, one student made a 16-point gain in one category in math and another earned a 21-point gain in one category in reading.
For my classroom, I'm the math resource room teacher. So I do the ninth through 12th grade special ed math here. Um, and I have an IXL champion board in my room that I started with the trials. So every week they were assigned lessons and I would move their name up based on how many lessons they completed. Um, and at the end of the year, the student that had the most lessons completed out of all of my classes would get a gift card to a place of their choice. Um, and my students have mastered 120 skills, are proficient in an additional 197 skills, and have answered 6,102 questions. Out of all my students, eight of them showed a significant increase in their NWA scores between the fall and winter testing sessions, and one of those students has a 24-point increase in math.
So our students love this program and they are very excited to have access to it again in the classroom because we, we shared with them that they are going to get it again. And one of my students actually cried tears of joy. He was so excited. So on their behalf and from us, we cannot thank you enough for giving us the opportunity to continue with IXL. And thank you for helping us support our students and for supporting their learning in our classrooms.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I'd like to picture you guys and then I'll take the picture.
Please want to turn to the coat and the bag.
It'll be the one.
You want to join me in the picture?
That's fine.
Yeah, if you could do one for me?
Yeah.
If it doesn't sign off.
No, it's all good. All right, I took the role.
It locks all.
Thank you.
Before you go on, I'd just like for the teachers, thank you for taking the opportunity to apply for the grant. I know it's a lot more work on your plate, but what I'm seeing and hearing, you truly are dedicated to your students and will do pretty much anything to help your students. And these scores are amazing because, you know, we've talked about NWA a lot in this realm here. And to move high school kids that much is, is not an easy challenge. So thank you for your dedication and what you do for our students. And thank you for the support. We really appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our overnight trip request to Spain. And Mr. Wong's line is going to take care of that for us this evening.
Mrs. Smallwood had an emergency literally before the board meeting. So I said I would take, um, I would present for her and Miss Area, not forgetting something to tell her. Several years ago, Mrs. Smallwood came to the board and talked about doing a trip to Spain. Uh, it was the spring of 2020, I believe, was when, with COVID and everything shutting down, she is looking to do that again next April, which would be April, leaving April 3rd of 2023, returning April 10th, which is spring break next year. Um, you know, you'll see in the package she has, it's the same company that we use in the past, which was remarkable. I mean, it was, as a parent who sent their student on this, this, uh, I could not believe the, the support for a parent, the answering the questions and so forth. Um, the, the itinerary is spelled out. The students are in a secure environment the whole time. They're not mixed with other students when they attend, go to various aspects. They are all Richmond kids together on the bus. Um, you know, it's going through Explorer Cup, if we pronounce it. And so what we're trying to do is offer this for current and past Spanish students who want to go. Um, there's usually a number of about 25 to 30 with chaperones in addition to it that we went in the past. Um, I would strongly recommend this if you're looking for my opinion. It's a great experience for our kids. I know the kids that went on last time spoke about it and really had a great time. Um, it's a lot of work and a lot of preparation on Mrs. Smallwood's part. Um, but as you know, Mrs. Smallwood, she is very diligent crossing your Ts and dotting her Is. So, um, I would recommend the board approve this at the next board meeting so that after spring break, she can get this information out to family. So what's nice about it is you can go on a payment plan so that you don't have to come up with all the money. And so as kids, many kids worked it off or did summer doubt, they can make payments. And it is a very affordable trip for what you get, including the airfare and so forth.
And she would like to add on the additional three days that you can take to Valencia, I believe, in the, in the quote.
So she's got in the back of excursion, it's a seven-day trip, basically with all the different spaces that are places that they will be going.
So when you, when you say current and former, you, you don't mean graduated, you mean?
Which is students.
They took it but aren't taking it current.
Correct. That's what I meant.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Wong's line?
And if something's thought of, I will get it to Mrs. Smallwood. I know she, but she, like I said, had an emergency and I, she needed to go home to prepare that first.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our instructional spotlight, the Title I program on Ms. Area.
Thank you. All right, so, um, I'm here tonight to discuss the Title I program. And I have two very special guests with us tonight, our very own intervention specialist, Ms. Lindsay McCoy and Katie Kelly. If you guys want to join me up here as we're presenting on our title program. So first of all, what is Title I? Um, we've kind of taken the initiative this year to revamp and strengthen the program this year. Um, it's a major component of the, of the ESSA and the largest federal assistance program in our nation's schools. Um, the goal of Title I is a higher quality of education for every child. Current, there are two different types of labels that you can receive in Title, which is a targeted Title I program or a school-wide Title I program. And currently both Lee Elementary and Richmond Middle School are identified as targeted Title I programs. These are a few things that our Title I services provide us. And you can see that provides us extra personnel to be able to support our students and teachers, gives them that individual learning. It provides additional classroom materials, intervention curriculum, supplemental items, small group intervention time, um, and additional staff development. It also provides funding for parent family engagement activities and nights, which we'll talk about because we have one coming up. Very exciting. And me, our Title I intervention team, like I said, we have Ms. Lindsay McCoy over here at Lee Elementary, who serves our K-3 students. And we have Ms. Katie Kelly, who's at our Richmond Middle School, who serves our 4-8 students. We also have our paraprofessionals, Ms. Jody Barant, who's at the middle school, Steve Pedry at the elementary, and Larissa Van Scooter at Richmond Middle School. She, for me, for saying Larissa, she would. Lisa.
I did ask. She said she doesn't care.
Okay. So, um, one of the things that we have initiated this year is a program called Ames Web. And Ames Web is a progress monitoring tool so that we can look to see what students kind of fall in what national percentile so that we're able to really identify in only on what type of interventions they may need, such as tier-two intervention or tier-three intervention, and what that might look like for our students and the duration and the frequency that the interventions may be needed. This is actually a real snapshot. Of course, I've blocked out the names for curpa reasons, but this is a snapshot of our first grade, um, students that have taken the assessment to see where they fall and where we're going to place them in our intervention schedule.
That's me. Um, so we have a couple of new things that we're doing this year that Ames Web, that she was just talking about. That's our, um, brand new to us this year. It's a progress monitoring. So we monitored all of our Title I kids at the beginning of the year and we found what tiers they fell into. And then we decided how many times a month, basically like once a, once a month or twice a month, we were going to monitor them and see their progress. So we have a lot of data on them, which is really cool. Um, we also have a new program called Bridges. That's a math intervention. Um, we are just getting started with that because we've been doing a lot of focus on the Ames Web. But, um, we've tested our kids to see where they fall. And the program tells us what module we need to start them with, which is pretty cool, um, based on their test score on the, on the intervention that they, or the test that they took. And so we're getting started that, getting that started and up and rolling. And then we're looking at a reading intervention program for next year. So Renee's done a really good job of trying to figure out what is best for this program because with, uh, we just started at the middle school and then COVID hit. So it was like, what are we doing? How are we supporting these kids? How are we helping these kids? So these are three things that we're putting in place right now to help us with this program.
So this is a snapshot of what Ames Web will do for us. And, um, basically here I have a tale of two students. Um, the inter, as you guys know, progress monitoring is strictly a program to see if our interventions are working. Um, as you know, that we take the three benchmarks a year to be able to see if students are making growth. Um, but sometimes even that three months, it's just, it's too late. We have to intervene right away. So here you can see our top student making adequate growth. Uh, the intervention is clear that it is working. They are growing at their appropriate rate of improvement. The bottom student is flatlining. And so what we can see is students down in real time that lets us take a note and change interventions to be able to provide either further duration or frequency, maybe a different curricular program. But there's lots of different changes of interventions that we can now see in real time that this isn't quite working and we can be able to make adjustments.
So I'm fairly new to the position, to the role. I started the year out as a catering teacher and this position opened. Now I'm super excited to take it on and now I find myself not being able to stop looking at ABA. Um, it's very intriguing to me to see the growth and just the difference in the need in each, in our building, I'm getting into elementary schools. So, um, this shows you our average increased RIT score for the, from the NWA of the students that we see from fall to winter. So you can see some, we've had some pretty significant growth, which is awesome and something to celebrate. Um, something to highlight, you can see in third grade, we had a positive 12.2 points in reading. And we're kind of excited because our third grade decided to start piloting a program and intervention model. So the teachers during our intervention time switch. So they start with the intensive, tier-three, one teacher does intensive, which has a smaller number of kids in their class than the strategic and the benchmark. So each kid is getting what they need at their level. Um, so we're hoping maybe to see, continue to see that kind of growth and maybe try to implement it throughout other grade levels. Um, we also do like have an entrance criteria. So based in the beginning of the year, we look at all students. And we, based on their economic status, their, um, NWA scores, we also do go on teacher input. And it, it's a point system. And based on that, that's where we first identify the students. Um, we also do have an exit, to exit the students. We've been doing monthly meetings with Renee, which has been very, very helpful. And we sit down as a team and we look at the students and we bring up Ames Web, which you just saw. And we have a discussion, does this child need to exit? Do they need a change of intervention? What can we do next, the next step? So that's been super nice, too. I've also had the luxury of sitting on child study meetings this year, or since I started. And bringing the Ames Web data to the meetings has been super helpful for teachers because then when they see that flatline, they say, okay, some things, we need to do something different. So that's been huge. We would love to eventually go to a universal screener. Where all students are possibly being, um, assessed on Ames Web so we can use that across the board. So it's very not subjective and we can look at every individual student.
We have a Title I Family Night coming March 28th from 5:00 to 6:30. This is the first time that we are combining courses, elementary, middle school, to do a combined parent night. Um, it will focus on reading and math and games and fun activities that parents can learn to help support their children. Um, we're going to have a setup where half the room is K-3-based and the other half is 4-8-based. And there'll be games for both reading and math. And it is invitation-only because we need to support our Title I students. And lastly, they don't know this is on the slide, but I would also like to say congratulations because we get the opportunity to choose literacy ambassadors to, to be able to represent Richmond at the county level and they get to go to monthly re, monthly meetings and they get to learn how to expand literacy in the community, all the districts. And I'm, so I'm just really proud to congratulate both Katie Kelly and Lindsay McCoy for being selected as our Richmond Literacy Ambassadors for the next school year. So congratulations. Does anyone have any questions? That concludes our presentation.
I do. When, when you talked about the, the universal, is the idea behind that? When you look at everybody to see there could be a kid that doesn't fall into an intervention, but there's help, is, is that what that idea is about, to look at every kid?
Yes, and all in the same way. You know, um, sometimes, you know, you're looking right now where there's a lot of, you know, teacher input. We want to be able to look at this data and say, you know, we have NWA, but just also have something else. And this is what's neat about this is, as Katie was saying, you're, you're assessing them. We're doing a quick, it's a minute long, just progress monitor. So you're, every week or every two weeks, you're seeing that mark. So you're seeing, okay, it's a quick adjustment versus NWA, which is great, it could be wrong, but you're doing fall, winter, spring. So it's a little bit more of a span. Ms. Kelly, let me bring your attention to the percentile range. You can see here that, those are numbers, those are national percentiles. Um, the statistic is students that fall below 55 percentile are most likely not going to make the spring benchmark. So even though right now in the fall initial NWA, they may be showing that they're fine. Of one of those months, they're not going to be fine. And our job as a universal screener is to identify those kids that are right there that maybe once a month, maybe it's April, they, they finally fall and we can get them caught up by the end. Or maybe it's October, but we know that they are in that area where they are, they are at risk of not making the spring benchmark. So to not wait till the main, um, NWA benchmarks, but to be able to progress monitor them monthly, to be able to identify those kids with those specific needs is going to be absolutely crucial for us.
So it's more intense, would be a better word, instead of, in my mind, how you're talking about the NWA, but if you're doing it more consistently, it's more intense because you're really keeping an eye on what's happening better for the kids.
And it's neat, too, because you can go and, we were looking, she stopped in today, we were looking at a specific child, and you can actually mark in there like intervention change. So when you're seeing that flatline.
On this specific date.
On this specific date. And you can, yeah. Right here, we can just put it in. You can see the little three arrows. Boom, intervention change. And you can mark exactly the week, the month that the intervention was changed. And we can notice what exactly we did that either show, show growth or did not.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
I would just say that the conversations with the administrative team regarding this and then going into deeper on our targeted mention is really, uh, we've kind of done a 180 this year in terms of really focusing on what do we need to do for kids? And, and really asking us the question, is what we're doing working?
Right.
Because it doesn't make sense to keep doing just because we've always done it. So this is, this is a prime example of changing it when we realize the data is showing it's not working.
It's very nice to see. Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you very much.
But it's nice.
We are working to get to the high school, there's some more there.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our bond update. Brian, I'm just going to turn it over to you.
To start, we have RJ Nunn from PFM Financial. You probably remember RJ from previously. He has been with us for many years. Here, we're going to talk about the upcoming bond, the last series of the bond. And I talked briefly with the board. Regarding. Sorry, it looked like it was upside down, the picture's upside down, sorry. We were originally going to schedule the last series selling out in, I believe it was '24. We wanted to move that up because we have finished most of our bond project. We were actually looking to be completing a lot of it, so I'll turn it over to RJ.
Thank you.
Can you just let me know when you want to click through?
Super. Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm RJ Nunn, I'm with PFM, we're financial advisors, and we worked with the district with their past bond projects. We helped early on with the bond proposal, and then we helped coordinate selling bonds when it's time. That's what we're here to review. So, this next slide shows the remaining authorized but not yet issued principal from the 2019 voter authorization. The district had, the proposal was 38.71 million, and the equivalent of 37,828,000 had been issued with the first series. And since bonds are issued in multiples of 5,000, that leaves 880,000 to be issued. And originally, it was planned for 2024, and it's not unusual for districts to issue bonds earlier or later, so things can often stray from the original plan. In fact, it's good to spend funds sooner, especially with some uncertainties regarding costs. It'd also be always good to get the work done sooner. So, that explains how we've arrived at the 880,000. Next, we have the seven outstanding bond issues of the district. And there's a 2010 refunding bonds. Bonds can be refinanced just like mortgages could. And, and these are voter authorized bonds, so that means that the bond payments are covered by property taxes, the former millage. That's the 2010 refunding, refinance in '99, refunding bonds, which refinanced in '96, building and site bonds. And then, there's a 2013 building and site bonds, and that is refinanced by the 21 issue. Then, we had a 2014 bond issue. And then, we have the 2017 refunding bonds. And then, we have 2018 building and site bonds, Series C, that was the third series of that authorization. And then, the 2020 building and site bonds, the first series from the 2019 voter authorization. And then, on the next page, there was a refinancing of the 2013 bonds that was done in 2021. And so, that far-right column are the total bond payments, and that's what's covered by property taxes. And that gets carried on to the millage schedules to help calculate the millage. And each year, the new taxable value is released, and then we set the debt levy for the coming year. And so, that will happen in June. So, here in both counties, and now the county's good at sending you the taxable value at the end of May. So, we work closely with Tammy and set the debt levy each year. I find this interesting. Here's the taxable value growth history. And since 2017, the taxable value probably has been fairly consistent between 3.3% and 3.9% annual change in taxable value. And we're estimating 23.5% change for 2022. We will know what the 2022 taxable value is before we sell this bond issue. So, we're going to help structure the principal, knowing what the 2022 taxable value is. These are state-qualified bonds, and the Department of Treasury requires that we adhere to what they call the statutory taxable value projection. That's how we're allowed to project taxable value growth on the known schedules. And for your district, it's essentially the five-year historic average at the time you sell the bonds for the following five years. So, we're going to, for now, we're going to estimate 3.5% change in 2022, 3.66% change for the following five years, and then the 20-year historical average thereafter. So, that's fairly conservative. But this bond issue's fairly short, I believe seven years or so. So, that's why we refer to that schedule because it helps us project taxable value growth according to the states, how they allow us to do it. So, here we have the millage projection before additional bonding, and the district's currently levying 6.95 mils. And the millage for the existing yet, not including this next series, is projected to go to 6.85. But like that 0.1 mil drop that's projected, that's going to be replaced with 0.1 mil for the next series of bonds. So, we designed that 2020 bond issue purposely to accommodate this next series of bonds. So, that's the millage projection before additional bonding. On the next slide, we have the millage projection with the new bonds inserted in the middle. And this is just an estimate, it's a pre-sale estimate. And this bond term's six years. There's a chance we might extend it a year depending on where interest rates are just before we sell the bonds, and also depending on what your 2022 taxable value growth is. I estimate the interest rate would be the 2%, 2.4% range. Interest rates had gone up in the past few months, but we're still expected to target the 6.95 mils, and we do have some flexibility on changing the principal structure on the day of sale. The day of sale is when the interest rates are determined, and they're fixed rate bonds. So, here we have the bond term fairly short, six years, and we're projecting 6.95 mils for the next three years, and then gradually falling off thereafter.
So, I think, Katie, if you look at the slide, it's Slide 10 in your packet, it's the one on here. We had talked previously about that 6.95 mils, and at some point in the future, you'd have a drop-off. From a strategic planning perspective, that's about the time that we're going to start running out a room at the middle school if enrollment keeps going the way it's going. And we had talked previously at a board meeting, and it's been public that at some point, we're going to have to look at adding on to the middle school. At some point, we actually made strategic with the field diamond, not putting them in that spot so that we could prepare for it. This would be an opportunity at that time, we'd have our to see, is that a time we could go to the voters for a new increase and give the dollars to, again, those are all future conversations, but everything we've done has been very strategic to position the district at a future date to be in a very good position going forward.
Very good point. There's significant projected decrease in millage going from the 2027 levy to the 2028 levy, and many districts plan, provided there's a need, plan to have another bond issue around that time, so it could be either no mill increase or a millage decrease, depending on what the needs are.
And you think about it, at that '27, the stuff that we did in '96 would be 30 years old. And so, at some point, just like your house, you'd have to repair and fix things. Well, this bond did a lot. There are stuff that we didn't touch because it was done on previous bonds that we didn't have to, that we'll actually have to come and start thinking about and looking for. And again, it was, it was designed strategically to put the district in a very good spot going forward.
Thanks, Chris. So, here are the bond scale methods, which I've already reviewed with Superintendent Lumsley and Tammy, and we're going with competitive bid bond sale, which is typical for smaller bond issues. That's when a notice of sale is published about a week before the bid opening. And whichever bank or brokerage firm submits lowest interest rate is awarded the issue. And there, there could be another school board meeting on the evening of the sale, whenever that sale is, at the end of May or beginning of June. And then, you have a bond sale, bid opening in the afternoon or morning, and then that evening, there may be a school board meeting to officially award the bonds. I'm not going to go into detail on the other methods of sale, but the 2020 series was much larger, and that was negotiated with Raymond James. So, moving on to the next slide are the next steps, and we've already taken some of these actions, and that is, we have the side-end method of sale, going with competitive bid approach, and the authorization resolution has been requested by Kaiser and Trin Law Firm to have it prepared and presented to the board at the March 28th board meeting. And that is the go-ahead to start planning to issue the bonds. Because the bonds are less than $1 million, there is no credit waiting, and there's no official statement. And so, that makes it pretty convenient to bring these bonds to the market. We don't have to sit through a credit rating call or a due diligence call to review the official statement. And then, once that, we have a marketing bulletin, which is basically a streamlined version of an official statement. Once that document's prepared, then there will be the bond sale, and we're targeting late May, early June. And then, the bonds will be delivered three to four weeks after that, and that would be by the end of June because we want to levy for the bonds in July. And the rule is, bonds have to be delivered before we can levy for the bonds. So, that's why we're timing it this way. So, that's, that's about it for the next steps, and I don't think any questions if you have them. And on the next page is just pictures of the team at the NWA office for PFM. There's a whole bunch of folks working on this project. Not just, couldn't do it alone. So, I have any questions?
So, at the next board meeting, I'll bring a resolution to authorize it, and then, again, as RJ said, we get the ball rolling, and we will sell our last series for about 880,000 dollars for what the voters approve.
And we forgot to mention what this next series will be used for.
We have, in the next series, we have some technology in it, we have some, there's a bus in it, and there's a roof. The roof, I believe it's 23, and well, by memory, it's a part of it, it's the elementary roof that's in 23, so that will pay for that roof replacement. You know, and throughout this whole process, the, we've added, we've been able to a lot more with this bond than what we actually went to the voters for. And throughout it all, we also had dealt with the interest rate. We did not get the interest we expected on our earnings or on our profit around the bond, so we also had to take that into consideration. So, given all of it, we have done a very remarkable job in accomplishing everything we've done and yet staying within the parameters of what the voters, obviously what the voters approve, but also the dollars to make sure we're in the budget. I couldn't do it without RJ, obviously Tammy, now you know how valuable she is. We've had a great team with Ock, just watching the dollars and making sure we are on track. It's been an enjoyable bond experience from product. Look, gray hairs with all the construction, but we've had a great team, so thank you, RJ.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Okay, our next item is our presentation on December 2022.
I have Jerry, I'm sorry, the second part of the bond.
Oh, sorry.
Come on up. So, in your packet tonight, we have a, an approval of one of the bond projects from the first series of the bond. So, Jerry, we talked briefly previously about what this entails, but do you want to just kind of go through and over it first on that?
Sure. So, we did out another phase of the paving replacement. So, this phase is actually the major of the student lot, the auditorium lot behind the school, and the approach, 32 miles. The idea behind this is to get us off of it right away, and have the high school complete minus the road. I think, is that Bear Street? I don't know, it's pretty bright.
Right, there.
That's right there will be last with the middle school next year. Based on what we ran into in weather, we didn't want to bite off all of this along with what we're doing with the ball fields, so we limited it to the high school so that there's still a way around. We did leave all last year, so we'll have access there. This lane will not be taken down until this lane over here is available. So, we're always going to maintain two lanes of exit, and so that was the approach. In doing so, we went out for bids. We advertised, it was in January or February, I can't remember exactly. We did get five responsive competitive bids, all good companies, all area companies. As you see in the recommendation, we have vetted that the James P. Contractings bid of 51215 is responsive, and was the low bid, and that's who we recommended for this one.
They, just to give you, they also did the elementary parking lot and so forth, so they're familiar with the district. Really, tonight is your approval to get this project started for the summer of 2022?
One other thing that we did do with the bids, we asked for unit pricing. Should we get a summer where it doesn't rain every other day? We have some opportunity. We will selectively be looking to do some additional paving, whether it be coming to the traffic circle from those other areas that are considered the middle school side. But that's going to be strategic, it's not going to be haphazard. And if we are really looking good with weather, we're more than likely getting a, an opportunity to potentially do some significant work. If that happens, we'll inform poor Brian to bring that to you to make sure. The money is all budgeted, and then these things are all falling within the budget, as Brian says, he keeps an eye on some of that. We do, we are, we got very good bids, so we are.
And to give you perspective, last summer, there was 27 days during the summer that was raining that we could not do the parking lot. So, that pushed us up to that 11th hour at the elementary school. We didn't want to bite off too much this summer, so that's why we broke it over two summers.
Thank you.
That's, that's all. That's it? Okay. This time, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for 031422 student discipline hearing.
Pursuant to Section 8B of Michigan Open Meetings Act, and upon the request of the student's parent and/or guardian, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the discipline of a student whose identity is known as student 031422.
Drive support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will be returning back out to open session to complete our agenda after our hearing. We are back in open session at 9:27. Next part of the agenda is public comments. Any member of the public may address the board at this time. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
This is where you do my acceptance speech?
No. Being no public comments, we're going to move on to our superintendent and legislative update.
Okay, just update the board on a couple legislative changes or things that have progressed since the last time we talked. Last Tuesday, the House Education Committee unanimously approved House Bill 4810 and 4811. This bill would remove the SA portion of the SAT as part of the Michigan Merit Exam. It would also remove the requirement that school districts include the MME scores of students on their high school transcripts. They repealed some duplicate language that is part of these bills in the School Aid Act regarding MME. Michigan Association of School Boards, as well as the Michigan Association of Secondary Schools, support these bills as it would reduce the amount of state testing and give students a choice in what they want to share with post-secretaries. So, the bills are now before the full House for consideration, so we're waiting on them. Also, last Thursday, the House passed House Bill 5703, which would require that certain sections of the Constitution, as well as the school code pertaining to parents' rights, be posted in administrative offices, as well as the boardrooms of public schools. This is now heading to the Senate for consideration. I don't know the motive behind that, other than it would now be required, we'd have to post it somewhere in this room. There's a series of bills that the Senate Education Committee is considering and looking at, one of them Senate Bill 107, which is, we talked last time about the Michigan Model
House Bill 4326, which would allow computer programming, if you recall from the last meeting, to be allowed as a foreign language credit under the Michigan merit curriculum. There's a few technical changes that were made, but the bill was approved and is now onto the full Senate for approval. Senate Bill 726, this is one that I'm very interested in because it shortens the period that retirees must wait before eligible to be hired as a substitute teacher. It moves that from 12 months down to one month, basically after retiring. This would expire July 20, excuse me, 2024. So it's a short-term fix and the idea is to get substitutes in the system. Senate Bill 940 and 941, they made some changes in the school law regarding Oxford Community Schools, their ability to meet days and hours of instruction, attendance, their ability to not have to administer the Michigan merit exam, other state assessment, teacher evaluations, administrator evaluations for this year. We expect this to go through the legislative route very quickly and it's specific just to Oxford. House Bill 5701 would change the reporting. If you recall, I talked to the board about a school safety grant a while back about putting those night lock door locks as a way of stopping active shooters. They adjusted to allow that to be easier to install those and go through the process, less hurdles we have to go through. That's what the school safety grants are promoting, that type of night lock system. And then finally, House Bill 4953, we talked about that we have the Michigan Department of Education would have to post some post-secretary information for students grades eight through 12. It would require districts to post it, disseminate it to students. Throughout the committee process, advanced placement courses were added to the language that we'd have to promote, advanced placement courses and options for students, particularly in the eight, nine, 10, 11 grade levels. Last Friday, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services ended the requirement that we must post on our website the number of confirmed COVID-19 cases. So we still have to report them to the Health Department, we no longer are required to post them on our website. There is a group out there known as Let Michigan Kids Learn that is trying to, there were two bills that last November, the governor vetoed, excuse me, Senate Bill 687 through 688 and House Bill 5404 and 5405, which were identical, approved by both the Senate and House. The governor vetoed. But also, what the bills did would allow tax credits to be given to private individuals who donated to private education. The first petition, there's now two petitions to put this on the ballot. The first petition would allow tax write-offs for any contribution to scholarship granting organizations. And the second is to allow scholarship opportunities that parents can apply for, which could lead to dollars being used to pay for private education. It's an end around to vouchers, which the state of Michigan has overwhelmingly, for many years, said no to. This is a different way of approaching it, allowing tax credit. When you give a tax credit, remember that affects school aid funds, general funds, less revenue coming in. So that's from the legislative front. Other than that, we haven't heard anything else on the budgets from the state. I'm going to turn over to Ms. Girard real quickly and talk about March's Reading Month and some of the activities going on.
Yeah, but as you know, March is Reading Month and we have lots of fantastic activities going on at Lee. We have a Winter Olympics theme with fun activities such as guest readers, bookmark creation contests, mystery readers. Our middle school is doing a Camp Read Aloud theme with lots of reading spirit days. They have their annual pie assembly today. High school has reading passages from popular books being called over the morning announcements called Guess the Book. Each day, a staff member recommends a favorite book and why, and all great things happening from the love of reading this month.
Again, if you have an opportunity to read in a classroom, let us know, we'll coordinate you with a building to read. On March 17, the high school is doing their annual St. Patty's Day Lucky Charms eating podcast.
Oh, gosh.
Mr. Lad is the reigning champion. I did ask Mr. Castle how I go about getting into that competition challenge. I've been watching it for eight years.
Have you been practicing?
I eat a lot of cereal when we're.
Lucky Charms.
This past weekend, right, anything really. This past weekend, our robotics team competed at Stony Creek High School in Rochester and I forgot the status.
They took a fourth place and they also got the something, Design Inspirational Award, which is something about whoever they designed robot had some new technique method, something like that.
Richmond High School band concert, or concert band, excuse me, competed in MSBOA competition in Anger Bay and received first division rating, which is outstanding. Middle school, we talked about the conferences that were held in all three buildings, we had a very good attendance for spring conferences. I think parents like the option of either doing virtual or in person based on their scheduling. I personally believe we get more attendance by giving that option rather than forcing in person, so our intent is to continue moving that in that direction. That's it. I want to give a shout-out to Michelle Gerard, she is a food service cook at Lee Elementary School. There was an article that was published by the food service organization and she is referenced in the article, it goes all across the state. So she does have a picture in here, it really talks about her commitment and our food service staff to providing meals for students. So if anybody liked it, they'd be more than happy to forward it to you or provide you a copy of it. And I did not receive any report from Mr. Reiner, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Interest from the board. I'll start, Kyle, anything?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Angelo?
I'm all set, thank you.
Margaret? Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing for me. Okay, we're moving on to our action items. Okay, I am looking for a motion for the approval of contracts for the Richmond High School paving project.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to James P. Contracting, Inc., as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for a proposal 32.1 asphalt paving and concrete curbs for an amount not to exceed $591,215. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools, for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond, Series 1, is available.
Support?
Support.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. It was me. I'm sorry, any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Kyle?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of a contract for the Richmond High School caulking project.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to Arisco Contracting Group, Inc., as outlined in the corresponding bid documents, for an amount not to exceed $15,300. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education and is authorized to approve change orders on the project up to 15% of the approved amount.
Do I have support?
Support.
Kyle. Okay, any discussion?
I don't intend to use that, but I want to get the project going for the change order, but we have pretty much laid out what's getting done, so.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of a board resolution for student 031422 disciplinary hearing.
I motion that following a closed session, student disciplinary, the board votes to suspend student 031422, consistent with the attached resolution.
Do I have support? Thank you. Margaret, present your. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Being there, no further business, we will adjourn at 9:39.